Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the monthly business meeting of the Wasika Public School Board, and it is Thursday, February 20th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM, and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll start off with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on your heart, in the office of liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. I see we have quite a few high school students here tonight. Thanks for coming. We'll move on to payment of claims. Grant.
I had a chance to review the payment of claims, and I make a motion to make a payment for the accounts payable of $3,695.84. That did include the annual January bond payment, which is why that's a little higher. Dental was $15,482.00, and payroll of $910,569.37.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that. All in favor of the motion for payment of claims, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item, motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. And second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. On the informational items, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Hutsbyth.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for being here on what feels like a warmer cold night. Not really sure if that's the right way to put it this week. So we get things moving for tonight. So as we begin our information items tonight, we're going to flip A and B on your agenda just a little bit as we give one of our staff members, who's hoping to be here for the American Indian Parent Conversation. And we'll start with Principal Ben O'Brien, giving us the update of what's happening at Hartley. This is the start of the next four months, where we'll do our annual building reports to hear what's happening in each of the buildings as they work towards our strategic plan goals. So then I'll give you the floor.
You're good. Good evening, thanks. Glad to have so many visitors. This is awesome. Yeah, so I just want to take a few minutes to just update you, the board, stuff going on at Hartley. I feel like most of you, whether you visit or have kids there, know most of this, or it's been shared, but really just being intentional about the strategic priorities in my, like, my site vision card. So first is our PBIS. You know, the district really focuses on Blue Jay Way, whether you're at Hartley, or Wiss, or the high school. And, you know, at Hartley anyways, the Blue Jay Way is respecting yourself, respecting others, respecting property, and respecting learning. And that is, that's in the bathroom, that's on the playground, that's at the bus stop, that's in the lunchroom, right? And we just really work with the kids to teach them that and grow those skills. Kids earn Blue Jay bucks. You know, those are the things that we hand out, a whole bunch of them, right? And we do drawings for those every Friday. And a kid might earn to decorate a cookie with the custodial staff, or lucky enough, they might have a donut with the superintendent. So, you know, just some fun activities on Fridays that those kids can earn. We also offer Golden Jays, where a kid might go above and beyond, might do an act of bravery, or, you know, just persisted in something. And so we do offer Golden Jays, and those kids get on our TV monitors, so they really look forward to that. And then we do assemblies once a month, and we kind of have, like, Brilliant Blue Jays, our Students of the Month. And if you're familiar with the Pioneer Newspaper, that's a partnership we have, and we put those Brilliant Blue Jays in that newspaper. So a good relationship with Ben Lutkin's over there. So, and then also, we include the staff. So every month, we send out a random email to five or six staff, and we ask them to nominate, or recommend, or give a compliment to a teacher. We don't share those compliments with the students, but we bring those teachers to the front of our assembly, and then we do a drawing for a parking spot at Hartley for the month. So, and there are better parking spots there than others. Those of you, if you do YSL, you got to park quite a ways away. Or, you know, if you're coming to visit, you got to park quite a ways away. So that means a lot to the staff, you know, for building culture, right? So shifting into some curriculum and instruction, and again, just thinking of strategic priorities, like learning for all, and the best use of our resources, right? We're in our second full year of implementation with Amplify. That's our reading curriculum. That's knowledge, so that's like content, and then obviously, like, reading skills. So that takes up about 110 minutes of our school day. We're also in our second full year of a dedicated What I Need time, like a win or a connect time that they have at the high school. And just, it's constant data analysis to provide that instruction for the kids where they're at. And it's just been a, it's been a nice thing to have at the school, and we're, like I said, we're in our second year of that. And then, you know, as the board's probably aware, the READ Act, you know, and the requirements to have our people trained in either letters or core curriculum for teaching, reading. Working with Brooke, I think we're going to have 37 Hartley staff completed by the June 30th deadline. And then three more staff that join the district this year will finish in November of this year. So 40 Hartley staff completed the training, and kudos to Eric and Brooke and Sarah to take advantage of a grant that was available to really support those teachers through that training. That was pretty, is very important for the teachers to get that. We also implemented Character Strong, which is a school-wide social-emotional curriculum. And we're in our first year of that. So essentially, teachers do like a mini lesson Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday and Friday. On Wednesdays, the best way I can say it is every teacher, every para in the building is in a classroom doing a, like, an extended lesson of 25 minutes on whether it's honesty, cooperation, perseverance, persistence. But when we implement these things for all kids, I need all staff doing it too, because that vocabulary goes beyond just what happens with the teacher in the classroom. Persistence happens on the playground. It happens in the lunchroom. Honesty happens everywhere, right? It happens outside of school. So we built a schedule to make sure we have Wednesdays for that all-staff teaching. That's been great. Mrs. Guzzi built out a schedule for the whole year, and I'd like to give her credit for that. So she built out the calendar for the teachers, and then it's an online resource we use. So it's really built and ready to go every day that it's used. Yeah, and then I think just kind of wanted to end with thinking about next year. You know, obviously, when you get curriculum, you want to keep going with that for a handful or more years. So we're excited to keep going with Amplify, Character Strong, and our Win Time. We're jumping on math, you know? Amplify's in its second year, and we're right into math already now. And Brooke is working with a team of teachers K-6 and 712, obviously focusing K-6 in my department, but getting some demonstrations and samples delivered to look at. And that would be huge if we could get that going in the fall. That's the goal. And yeah, enrollment. You know, just doing some work today. We're up, you know, maybe a dozen kids at Hartley, so that's good. Always being flexible as we go into next year, like, numbers of sections in the school. This year, it's like 5-5, 4-4. Five sections K, five sections in first, four in second, four in third. That first grade group is a little larger, so, you know, shifting adults to match those numbers. And then working with Eric. Kindergarten is a guessing game every year. So working with Eric and Sarah to get registration completed by families, hopefully at the end of March, and knowing what our staffing needs to look like going into the fall. And then I guess, I just, you know, it's a great opportunity to end with just thanking all the staff at Hartley. You know, whether it's custodial, food service, clerical, and those teachers and paras, like, they just, it's fun to lead an environment where people are lifting each other up and supporting each other. It's okay to fail at Hartley and try new things. And we just, we have this constant growth mindset. And yeah, they just go above and beyond for the kids. And I just think it's important to share it at the table here today. There you go.
Well, thanks, Ben. Any questions for Ben?
Ben, your mini sessions that you were talking about, it was, what did you call them, social, emotional?
Yep, Character Strong.
Okay, how long have you been doing those?
First year.
First year, okay.
And we started, we got the Curriculum Access August 30th.
Okay.
So we're learning as we go here, really quick.
Sure. At the end of the year, will you get feedback from teachers about any benefits or any things that they noticed?
Getting it already.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it was just interesting. I observed a teacher doing a STEM activity with her class, and she pulled in the perseverance lesson that she did that morning into the work that they were going to do with the STEM activity. So, yeah, very impactful. And when you can take it and put it into different parts of the school day, that's just great.
Okay, you have an after-school program called Rising Blue Jays.
You bet.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. For as long as I've been at Hartley, it's been Kids Academy. And we've always, during the school year and during the summer, during the school year and during the summer, we serviced a percentage of kids, you know, 15% down below. And this year, for the first time, starting in January, we shifted to a Rising Blue Jays, where we looked at kids in the 15th percentile to the 45th percentile. So looking at a different group of kids, trying to get in, getting them over the hump to proficiency. So.
How's that going?
It's fantastic. You know, Amanda Anniston is the coordinator of that program. So she built the criteria. She built the schedules for the staff. And yeah, it's working out great.
Okay, any other questions for Ben? All right, well, thank you.
You bet. Appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Yeah, keep doing what you're doing.
Well, as you can hear in Ben's conversations, you know, the strategic plan priorities that you advocate for us as a school board really does impact the work at the school buildings as they work through those different areas. So we appreciate you taking the time to hear about what's happening in those buildings, and we'll follow up with the other three sites here in the next few months for you. So at this time, I go to our next information item, and I turn to Dr. McGuire to talk about the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee and their work this year.
Yeah, and I'll be brief, but we have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee we have for several years. When you, a district has 10 students who are American Indian, then you are required to do that. And then, once you get, once you reach 20, then you have the potential for some funding. So that's the point that we reached last year. And so a lot of our work with the APAC has been around determining how to use that funding. It's very specific to supporting American Indian students, but that's what we've been working on this year. And we're fortunate to have a staff member who is American Indian and serves as our co-chair there. And so as a group, they vote and decide whether or not the group, whether or not the district is doing everything they can to help support American Indian students. And so they call that the vote of concurrence, and they did vote to concur. So presenting that to the school board, and then we'll ask for some signatures, and then submit that paperwork, and we'll continue our work that we're doing of getting their input of the APAC, and then working to, working to make improvements as we can. I think we're all in agreement, like, the district is doing a lot of great things. There's always areas for improvement, so that's what we're identifying and trying to focus our efforts on.
And there she is.
She can officially present the vote. But yeah, we can assure that was already.
Okay. Hello. Um, well, I am here as a representative of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Yes, to present the committee's vote of concurrence that the Wasika Public Schools are meeting the needs of American Indian students.
Okay, anything you'd like to say to us?
It's, this committee was started last year. It would be great if we could grow our committee, I think. Yes. And I think that Brooke's done a great job leading it or helping facilitate it. And I think that we have a lot of potential for growth and for, you know, adding. There's always work to be done, so I'm kind of excited to see the future of it and just hoping that we can get more involvement, which will be good. More voices is always great.
One of the reasons why this committee is so important to our work is because those dollars, which now we've achieved the population, where we get some money that comes along with it, it has to be utilized directly to the students that it's intended to serve, so American Indian students. And so it's really hard for me to sit in the superintendent's office, or even in the principal's office, and to have a fully fleshed idea of what we work for our students who may have specific needs. So our Parent Advisory Committee really helps us in that regard to ensure that we're really using the money the way it's supposed to be. In our office, Sarah and I are mostly focused on, is that going to be an approved expense, right? That's what we're looking at. But they're looking at, is that going to really serve kids? And so that's really what's helping. Between Brooke and Paulina and the rest of the team, they've been able to do that. So we appreciate the work and glad to hear that we're having a vote of concurrence tonight.
How many families do you have on that committee or representatives? Is it just you, or do you have other family members on there?
There's fluctuated over, yeah, we had, Pauline did join last year, but we've had it prior to then. And there's been a solid, like, five families who participate, but it changes every year.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
And this will be an action item for you to acknowledge later on in the meeting. I'll move to my report now, and I just want to take a brief moment to walk through our strategic priorities and talk about some of the work we've got going on right now. In the area of learning for all, you know, this is the time of year when we're really reviewing winter assessments and thinking about students' progress through the first semester, first half of the school year. Half of the school year is our terminology, more so than that. Semester for our students taking PSCEO and those type of courses, I suppose. Thinking about it that way. And then we're planning for some of those spring instructional adjustments. Ben talked about the win groups. We're looking at, do we have to change some of the priorities we're focusing on for some of our students to get them over the hump? Our counselors at the high school are focusing on some of those students who may be close to not making it this spring and focusing on how we get them across the finish line to support them, so they really have those options for life as they see it. And then by the end of next week, I just talked to Principal Miller here yesterday, or Tuesday, I guess it was. And by the end of next week, they're hoping to have pretty much all their registration done at the high school and start building staffing needs for next year, so we can get into March and look at what we need for next year. Speaking of which, that, from the Efficient Use of Resources Strategic Plan, this is the time when we're really in revised budget time for this particular year. So Sarah, when she gets back from vacation, will be working hard and heavy on getting that revised budget prepared for you in March. Principals and directors have been providing input over the last six weeks as we prepare for that. As you can see in the report tonight, which I'll cover in just a few minutes, no significant changes from the budget expectations for this time of the year. So don't anticipate there being much there. One of the most important pieces of resource use right now is we're watching the legislature and watching to see what that could, how that could impact us going into the future. I don't think that the realistic expectation is that there will be a lot of dollars there that would be increased for schools. What I'm hoping we can continue to focus on is some of the mandate work and some of the things that we've been expected to implement over the last few years. Some of those are, we talked about our previous work session, some of those we don't expect to be going anywhere, but we're hoping that we don't see anything else right added along with that. And right now is the time when, so now for a few more weeks, then the Republicans, right, have the, have control of one side of the, one side of legislature. But then when the special election happens in March, I'm pretty sure it'll go back to even control. So they're trying to get everything across. It's, and their side, the House Democrats are doing the same thing on their end. So it's just a little bit of that process as we watch it through. Everything from the kids don't need to take Algebra II anymore to putting roofs on the LTFM thing. There's, right now is that throw it all out there kind of time of the year. So by the time Grant and Charlie and I head to the Capitol here in a few weeks, the first committee deadline will have been met. And we'll probably have some more things to focus on at that time. Continuing to work on being safe and welcoming and continuing to amplify voice in our buildings. Student advisory committees and our building listing sessions, that next round is coming up pretty soon here. They're going to get scheduled, starting next Monday. I don't know, has Dr. Miller ever told you guys that yet? Okay, good, that's good. Next Monday is our next high school advisory committee, and we'll be bringing in a speaker for that to have some conversations with the students about how they feel about whether or not we should bring that to the rest of the group over there. We're also currently assessing our cameras and building entry systems and talking about different ways we could improve that. Our current system is aging quite quickly, and we need to think of how we continue to support that. And then finally, I would talk about just the fact that we're continuing with our community engagement with our monthly newspaper columns, our Coffee with the Superintendent. Ben could have spoken to this here a few minutes ago, but we just have had some initial conversations about taking that Coffee with the Superintendent and reframing that a little bit to Coffee with the Principal and having our principals maybe offer, like, a Friday morning once a month, where sit in the cafeteria or the lounge and have a cup of coffee for families that may want to come in and have a specific conversation about their school. And so trying to increasingly invite folks into our, into our environment. Questions about that? Okay, so then for the financial report tonight, and as I mentioned, Ms. Cramblett is enjoying some time in Florida this week. And so she picked a good week to be south, I tell you. That's something to, when you roll the dice, you pick the good one. But I would point out a couple of things in your financial reports that you have in your packet tonight. The first is, you can just see our revenues and expenditures year-to-date are tracking very close to two prior years. They're both just a few percentage points higher than they were, and that just has to do with the timing of when those reports were run. But also, I mean, they both are tracking the same. So more revenue, more expense. We do have a few more students, as Ben alluded to, than we had budgeted for initially, and that's been, there's some more services than we provide, but then the revenue that comes with that as part of the process. So no concerns with our financial status at this time of the year. From enrollment, you can see that, you know, we did track down a few students from January to February, which is pretty normal for the year, but we're still above where we projected we would be for the school year. And you can see in the previous few school years, from September to February, we do tend to see a little bit more of a dip than we've had this year. This year, we're only, we're only down a handful of students as the school year's gone on. You can see that our other non-public partners really haven't changed much as the school year has gone on. So that's just been students choosing other options or leaving the community is how that, how that happens. But our enrollment is still looking quite positive based on those projections. We do graduate a larger, Ben was alluding to this a little bit. We do graduate a larger senior class this year than some of the classes behind it. So we'll be watching that very carefully to see what that means going forward. But enrollment right now is very stable for this school year and right along, allows us to implement what we thought we were going to from our budget perspective. So I can answer any questions on that finances as well? If not, we can move on.
Any questions for Eric?
I would say that Sarah did go through the revenues and expenditures in pretty significant detail with the finance committee last week as well. So if anything else you want to speak to that committee members, you can do it now or during your committee report as well.
I just think, the only one discrepancy, or not discrepancy, but when we looked at the comparisons, there was, I don't remember where it was, it showed a higher, a higher dollar amount in one area. But that's because she breaks it out when it comes in, where our past business manager did not. That was a big one for me that I saw.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Scott. All right, well, no other questions for Eric. We'll move on to committee and board member reports. I'll start off to see, well, actually, let's go to Charlie, because our world traveler.
Yeah, I've been a little missing in action. We've been traveling this winter, so. But I did, this week, this week I did tune into a couple of MSBA webinars. And, you know, one was just a chat session, listening to what other board members from around the state of Minnesota are doing. And there's been a lot of, there's a lot of talk about financing, of course. That's been, that's a big deal. Some schools are having a big trouble, a big, big problem, but they're trying to work through that. And then today's session was on budget setting, and they were talking about compensatory funding, you know? And all I know is I'm glad we got a couple of good people sitting outside of the desk. Have to take care of that for us, because it's complicated. It's a very, very complicated subject, you know? So I did tune in, and it kind of opened, opened my eyes a little bit too about the difficulty of school finance. School finance is tough, tough work, so. But otherwise, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to go to any, any other meetings concerning this, so.
Okay. Do you want to explain what compensatory revenue is?
Sure.
And how it's determined and what it does?
Yeah, so compensatory revenue is, if you look at the, if you think about the exact definition of the word, it's meant to compensate for the extra support that's needed for students that may have higher levels of need. So that's based on our free and reduced count, is how that is calculated. And so districts then are offered this compensatory dollar amount that has to be utilized for students to provide additional services. The law has changed, talking, speaking to Charlie's complication, complicated comment. The law's changed in the last several years. Free lunch for all has really thrown a loop through this process. Because when we first saw, the first year of free lunch for everybody during the pandemic, students were not having to fill out their free and reduced, free and reduced forms. So did that mean that we had less students who were living in that financial situation in our community? No. But all of a sudden, our free and reduced count as a district went down significantly because we weren't able to report those students. And no matter how much we, at the time Jason Forshee was in the Food Service Director's Chair, and the amount of outreach we did for students to say, please fill this out, it's just, it was $300,000 hit to our budget that next year based on that change. Well, then the next year went back to paid lunch, but now they've added what's called direct certification. So if a family receives medical assistance, So if a if a family receives medical assistance, then they don't need to fill out the form. They automatically get the free and reduced. Going forward, they're going to move to all of that. All that's be the only way to report. So it should be more manageable to be able to just see what our numbers are with that opportunity. But what happened was districts were reporting that we weren't seeing this revenue coming forward. So the at the time, the legislature passed what's called a hold harmless expectation, which means whatever your highest rate was in the last three years, that's what you get for compensatory dollars. Interestingly enough, so I said, we went through down 300,000. We went back up 700,000 the next year when we were now having to pay for lunch again. And so we're a district right now that's in a situation where we're very fortunate that our students are filling out the form, we're getting the information, working with parents on that. So I'm not super worried about it. But there are districts that are because that hold harmless goes through the next fiscal year, goes through the spring of 26. And beyond that, you get what you get as far as compensatory dollars go. So if you're having a hard time and free meals, this is one of those unintended consequences. If kids don't have to fill out the form, then our current model, you have the risk of not having this accurate reporting what's going on in your community. I'm less concerned about trying to play the dollars game as much as I am. We want an accurate indicator of where our community is is living. And we want to know how what our students are experiencing. So this model to go all to direct through MA is going to help us. That's for sure. I will tell you right now that the way that Sarah has done her work, the way that myself and Amy McQuarrie has done the work, it's only about a $30,000 change for us, based on how the current law is written. So we're in pretty good shape. We've set ourselves up to insulate for this. But it is it is going to be something the districts are going to have to navigate going forward. So that's that's where it sits. But and the other thing that's changed with that, I don't mean to get too windy with it, but it's a it used to be you could put, I think it used to be 30% had to be used at the site that generated the dollars. Okay. And the rest could be used throughout the district. So for example, Hartley has its own free and reduce count. WIS has its own free and reduce count. The dollars that Hartley generates, 30% has to be used there. And then the rest can be used throughout the district all throughout. Why that matters? And so they've increased that to, I think, 60% now has to be used at the site it was generated. Okay. Which doesn't seem like a big deal because we're still going to use it throughout, except our ALC generates a lot of dollars. Our ALC generates more dollars than it could ever use. And so now we have to use those dollars at the ALC that we could have previously used to support students elsewhere. And so that's just Mandine Owens done a great job with that. It started with Matt Moline and now Sarah Cramblett getting a plan together. We added some intervention services. It's been fine. But it just requires us to be even more nimble than maybe we had in the past. So a bigger district, that's a bigger deal. That may have, let's say, 10 elementaries and one really has a significantly lower free and reduce count. Well, they might have been able to be subsidized by the other buildings with some intervention support. And now they can't because they just have to this is what you get. This is what you get. So not necessarily good or bad. It's just something we got to pay attention to.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Darren?
As in DAC. Brooke, if she was here, could cover a little bit of what's going on there, but I'll leave that one. Go to the line. And then we had activity meeting yesterday. Very interesting. I think we're being that it's newer and a lot of just listening right now to just gather information to to see how the whole. There's a lot that plays in with activities, not just with sports, but a lot of other things such as speech and drama and all that to have and extracurriculars. So.
I think it's going to be a really, really powerful and valuable committee. Once we get it. It was a good meeting, I thought.
I think I think, you know, from parents out in the community, we have a lot of questions to us that we, at our level, aren't aware or have the answers to or. So I think right now, yeah, this is a good gathering point to where we can assist with those people in the community later down the road. So.
I was in that same meeting. It was very much surface, very surface level for the first meeting, which is kind of what I guess I would have expected. But yeah, I really think that's a great new committee.
Yeah, and I would concur. I thought it was a really good meeting. A lot of information was shared, a lot of questions, a lot of good comments, a lot of good conversation. Yeah, I thought it was really good.
Other meetings? I had superintendent evaluation meeting. We just kind of went through where we're sitting on those goals. Nothing really new to report there. And then I also had a personnel committee meeting where we talked a little bit about staffing for next year. So that's already in the works, I guess, is looking forward to next year. So stay tuned on that, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Colin, Alan?
I'll go first. We are making the transition from one act, which was fairly successful for us. We made it to the sections. We ended up not moving it, not advancing, but it's where the cookie crumbles. And we are moving into our musical, which is the Addams Family. And people are very excited about it. And we have a choir concert on February 25. Is it free to the public?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe it's $7 for adults.
Okay. Listen to him, I don't know much. We have a spring activities meeting on March 2. And we are very excited for people to start their spring activities. Boys hockey sections are in the quarterfinals tonight against Austin. State science Olympiad on March 1. And our annual snow week dodgeball tournament ended up being a pretty big success this year.
And then for speech, we had nine finalists compete in the final rounds for our first two competitions, which was great. We have a large speech team this year. And then we had our show choir compete this Saturday. They did good. I believe we got seven overall. And then we have our large group contests for other districts around for our band and choirs. And then we have our select sextet groups that will be performing the national anthem at Wrestling State. And then we have our BPA state competitions coming up in March. And then the math team state competition also coming up in March, which is exciting because it's the first time in a couple of years that the math team has made it to state. And then, like Superintendent Huthwith mentioned, we have the advisory meeting on Monday, which is exciting. And then he also asked me and Alan for input on the policies review today. So that was fun. That's all we got.
All right. Thank you. Scott?
So the only one that wasn't covered so far was finance. And we just went through what everybody sees in their packet today with the revenues and the expenditures. And they highlighted that the student count was higher than expected.
All right. Thank you. Ann?
Um, I was also at the DAC committee meeting. I thought it was very beneficial. It was a lot of information newer to me. So I enjoyed that. We talked about everything from test tests scores to curriculum to the principal's goals as far as improvement. And it was nice to get some feedback from from all of those people and Dr. McGuire, of course, she weighed in also. So then I also attended the professional growth and development meeting. And that was also nice to talk to teachers from all different schools about some training that they had gone gone. Well, they went through it. I think it was onsite. But so some had good feedback and thought it was beneficial and others didn't. And so they told Dr. McGuire their thoughts about that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Grant?
I had finance committee and policy committee and covered finance and policy. We went through the ones we had. Nothing of note. They'll be coming up on our agenda.
Okay. You want to start us off on the positive board feedback?
Well, then I get to say the things that everybody else won't be able to. I only wanted to note, I think we had recently was announced the AAA winners, which I think was Luke Yoder and Callie Dufault, and the Excel winners, which are both of those are for students that I think AAA athletics, academics, and arts, which it highlights students that do well in those. And the Excel award was for Cork Medina and Paige Dufault. So it's exciting to see our students get recognized for all the great work they do.
All right. Thank you. Ann?
So I was going to mention the Excel award for those two students. So just congratulations to them.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
I just want to put a shout out to all our winter sports that are coming to a wrap up here with sections and and things like that. And it's interesting, I've been on the road for work in three different towns in the last three days. And Wasika has been brought up in their sports and their academics, which is pretty cool that that people don't even know that I'm from Wasika, but we start discussing it. So it's pretty neat to see that. We are on the board.
And in addition to that, the reputation that our students and parents have is pretty positive. So that's nice to see as well. I wanted to mention, oh, sorry, I'm skipping you guys.
No, you're good.
I wanted to mention Devon Lawrence. He helped with the talent show and that was great. That was really fun to watch. And then also with those hockey and basketball and all of those things wrapping up for the season, all those sports cheer in band and all of the coaches and directors and students that go along with that instead of just, you know, obviously, boys basketball and and boys hockey are getting a lot of recognition. But there's a lot of other students and supporters that go with that that are appreciated.
And then positive feedback for me would be our musical director. We started musical rehearsals and that's been great. She's brand new this year and that's exciting. She's doing a really great job. So shout out to Miriam.
All right, I'm going to give a shout out to Andy Balderez, who was at an all-state band thing.
Concert.
Concert at Orchestra Hall last weekend. Yeah, last weekend. As the only bass trombone player out of 200, I want to say, that auditioned.
Can you say that again? The only?
The only, the only one out of like
Wow.
100 plus that auditioned. So good for him.
All right. Thank you. Darren?
You know, I think just jumping on that bandwagon of all the winter activities that coming to the end for this, you know, sections of whether it's speech and whatnot, and in the hockey team and the basketball and wrestling individuals is coming up this weekend. I want to say thank you to the wrestling team, seventh through eighth, 12th graders. They all assisted us in our youth youth tournament this weekend, volunteered. And they showed up and really gave us a hand. I don't think we would have had enough volunteers without them. So it was very appreciative.
Tell us how many kids wrestled on Saturday?
Saturday, we had 505. And Sunday, we had 20 teams of about 15 to 20 kids each. So and Wasika K3 made it to the championship pool for the first time that we've held this this year. So they took fourth place out of 20 teams.
Good. All right. Charlie? Okay, I have two. Then I'll mention this is National FFA Week. I thought maybe you might mention that, but I'll I'll mention it. And then yesterday was in Minnesota, bus drive, school bus driver appreciation day in the whole state. So a shout out to our bus drivers and to our two bus companies, Palmer Bus and Lenz Bus, for providing our students with safe travels. You know, they're out there when it's really, really cold, it's icy, it's snowy, it's raining. And they do a good job. So thank you to them for that. All right, we'll move on to action items.
Mr. Chair, could I throw one? We don't want to forget, we have a gymnast at state this weekend as well.
Yes.
So Bella's heading up to state there tomorrow. And congratulations to her and look forward to having a good showing at state. So
Yeah.
I mentioned a lot of state stuff. I didn't want to let her
Yeah.
fall off the wayside.
She
Fall off the beam, so to speak.
Breaking a lot of records this year, too.
She's having a great
School record?
Yes.
I saw in the Minneapolis Tribune, this was probably about two weeks ago, she was 10th in the state for average all around score for a meet. And I thought to myself, wow, of all the girls in the state of Minnesota, big schools, small schools, and she's 10th, that speaks pretty highly of her. So.
Congratulations to her.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to action items. Motion to approve item A.
I'll make a motion to approve the received donations.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Do we do a real call on this?
Yes.
Okay. Amy?
All scholars?
Yes.
Darren Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie McRee?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Anne Marga?
Yes.
Grant Sheffer?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item B, we will acknowledge receipt of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee vote of concurrence.
Yeah, very good. And once again, just thank you for their time and appreciate Dr. McGuire and all of the principals for doing some great work for students and the staff for making it happen.
Okay. Motion to approve item C.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached 2025 seniority list.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve item D.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff sharing agreements between ISD 0829 Wasika and ISD 2168 Nurgentlal Janiva.
Okay, is this special ed?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
And I would just want to add for the good of the order here, the reason why this happens in the middle of the year is as students' needs change with their with their special special education services throughout the year, we sometimes have to change how much of an FTE goes between our our four districts. So that's why you might, why would you see something happen in the middle of the year? That's why. Because as things evolve, we have to adjust. So thank you.
All right, motion to approve item E.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff sharing agreement between ISD 0829 Wasika and ISD 2143 WEM.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion in the second. All in favor of approving item E, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And a motion to approve item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the reviewed policies, 501 school weapons policies, 502 search of students lockers policy, and 504 student dress and appearance policy.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in the second to approve item F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Upcoming items, reminders, next work session is Thursday, March 6. And our next regular business meeting will be Thursday, March 20. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned.